With that, I will say, due to the COVID-19 emergency, the Planning Commission will be conducting its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather a quorum of its members physically present in the same location because it is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 71, which remains into effect till 11:59 PM, February 27, 2021. With that, I will call to order, and as it has been determined that we will meet electronically, this is necessary to protect the public health and safety and welfare in light of the coronavirus. Recording of this meeting is to the public online. I am going to determine a quorum. When I say your name, let me know that you're here. Mayor Nois?
Here.
Shelley Smith?
Here.
Rupa Blackwell?
Here.
Swer?
Here.
Hill Comer?
Here.
And Greg Sandlin?
Here.
I'm present as well. All seven is here, and we have a quorum. All right. Let's see here. Mr. Sandlin, did you lead us last time on the Fledge of Allegiance?
I don't think I did, but I'd be happy to do it this time.
You can do that for us. Thank you.
All right. Stand. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. All right. First bit of business here is we will read and approve the minutes. So, once you have read the minutes and y'all are comfortable, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Blackwell.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Smith. All right, we get to do the roll call thing, guys. So, I will start as I see you on my Zoom feed. Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nois? Mayor Nois?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Swer?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I am yes as well, so that will be unanimous. All right. Next, any reports from staff or officers?
No, sir.
All right. Our first on our agenda is old business, but I think we have had, we'll just talk through this real quick. Mr. Howard has asked that we hold this off to our next meeting, but I know we need to recognize that we're within 60 days. The Senate, sorry, that time's tied. So, what, do we still need to discuss? I know we had a lot of questions on this. Would that be the time for open discussion? Or do we, since he asked for 30 days, how would you direct that we should go?
The applicant requested a continuance for 30 days. Your next meeting is March 15, so you could make a motion to that effect. Also, we do have the city engineer present. If you still want to hear the presentation for the information that you have requested, I believe that would be appropriate unless the city attorney thinks otherwise.
I don't think there's any objection to hearing his report if he wishes to make it, although if we postpone the entire thing, that also would be appropriate. But whichever the commission wishes to do is appropriate.
Um, I guess my question is, if we can still hear the presentation but still like to postpone for 30 days, would that be okay, Mr. Warsham?
Yes, that would be all right.
Just to kind of get a quick from our commission, would y'all, do you want to postpone completely for 30 days? Or would you like to hear the presentation, knowing that we are going to postpone it? I will just ask them individually, just real quick. Ms. Smith?
You were calling me first.
I'm sorry.
Pardon me, pardon. Pardon me, just a minute if I might interrupt.
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Howard with us tonight?
No, sir.
Then I think we ought to postpone the discussion and the report as well because he ought to be able to hear that, too.
Okay, then that's what we will do. If I will entertain a motion for us to postpone, and that will still fall within our 60 days, correct, Mr. Samanyego?
Yes, sir.
You called on me first, so I'll move to postpone.
Okay, move to postpone. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have the motion made from Ms. Smith and a second from Alderman Blackwell. All right, I will do the roll call vote. You're up on my screen, Ms. Smith.
Sorry, point of order. So, you're voting to continue the public hearing to the March 15, 2021 Planning Commission meeting at 4:30 PM?
Is that, that's not necessarily a public hearing. Would it be just going to be centered, we've already went through the public hearing section of it, correct?
Right, but if you're continuing a hearing, you have to state for the record exactly what date and time you're continuing to, so we don't have to re-advertise it.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
All right, so, did everybody get that? We are moving to continue to our next meeting, which is March 15. All right, and Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Swer?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
Is Mr. Comer still with us?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. You're hiding in there. All right, and I will be, yes, if we seven, we will postpone till March 15. All right. All right, so that was all the old business. Now, we are in new business, and our first new business is a zoning map amendment, public hearing. This will be the zoning, zoning map amendment for 244 request. This is a request to rezone a parcel on 300 South Atlantic Street from Commercial District C1, Neighborhood Commercial to C3, which is Neighborhood Commercial District. Our, Mr. Reyes is our applicant. Just as a point of order, we, within our bylaws, we have a certain way that we're going to go through these. I think everybody might have got a copy of those, I'm not sure. So, in a public hearing, you know, the first applicant, we hear from the applicant or the, is that right, Ms. Samanyego?
Samanyego, yes, the, we hear from the applicant, then the commission can present questions or concerns to the applicant, then the general public can do public comments, then the applicant and commission can respond to the public comments, staff does their presentation, and then there's discussion among the commission, and you close the hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess now I will ask, is the applicant available to speak for the zoning map amendment 244?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't get on Zoom, but I am, I'm over the phone.
All right. Can you just tell us a little bit about what you're planning, what you're doing?
Uh, yes, sir. What I have is, it's an older property that has been there. It's, it's been a house for, it's just been a house that people have been living in for as long as it's been around. Unfortunately, the person that I purchased it from left it empty for over a year, so it went back to commercial. But it's, it's a property that would be very difficult to rent to, as I, commercial property, because it's not really sitting out in the road. It's kind of sitting towards the back around some other residential properties. So, it's, it basically boils down to it's an old house. So, it, we're trying to just, you know, fix it up and use it as a rental house as opposed to fixing it up and trying to put a business in it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So, now, I guess, do we have any questions right now from the commission? All right, no questions from us. Then I will open the public hearing. With the public hearing, everybody's designated two minutes. Please state your name and your address. If you are planning to donate your time, please state it in the beginning so we can tally those up, so we don't have some doing computer-wise, we don't have a lot of interruption there. With that, I open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak? All right, that, I will close the public hearing. Nobody spoke, so we won't respond. So, now we will listen. Mary, could you give us a staff report?
Yes, thank you, sir. This application is zoning map amendment number 244. It's for the property located at 300 South Atlantic Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from Central Commercial District C1 to Neighborhood Commercial District C3. The area to be rezoned is approximately 0.28 acres. As the applicant stated, it's an existing single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1905, and it's approximately 1,775 square feet. The, a single-family residence is considered a non-conforming use in the C1 zoning district because C1 does not allow single-family houses as a permitted use. Per Section 802-F1, if a house or a non-conform, if a non-conforming dwelling unit sits vacant for more than a year, it loses its non-conforming status, which means that it cannot be remodeled and reoccupied as a house. The applicant purchased the property with that intent, however, he was unaware that that one-year time period had lapsed. Saying that, in a effort to allow the new property owner to fulfill his desire to remodel the house and have it occupied as a single-family house, while at the same time, because this is in a commercial land use category, as well as in relative close proximity to the downtown, staff is recommending to go to the C3 zoning district, which is that Neighborhood Commercial District, which allows for a myriad of commercial uses, but also allows for single-family residential dwellings. So, in the short term, the applicant can exercise their property rights to develop out a single-family house, but in the long term, the cities and the applicant and a potential future developer could still occupy the existing dwelling or redevelop the site for commercial uses, so we don't miss out on that future opportunity. It meets all of the minimum lot size and dimensions of the C3 zoning districts, and there were no concerns from staff. So, staff's recommendation is to make a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. I'm available for questions.
Questions for Mary. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to open discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mayor Nois and Alderman Blackwell with a second. All right, any discussion within the commission? All right, with that, I will call the question, and I will move forward. This is for a favorable approval to be sent to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the rezoning map amendment 244. So, as you, as I see you on the screen, Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Swer?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
Comer? Mr. Comer? I think. I see, Mr. Comer.
There you go.
I was trying to unmute. It wasn't clicking for some reason. I thought I voted before. I must have voted for somebody else, but I thought you called my name and I said yes.
That's all right. That's all right. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes. That will be a unanimous decision, favorable decision to move towards the zoning change. All right, now we're to number two, zoning map amendment 245. This is a request to rezone the parcel of Block 200 on Flower Town Road from Low Density Residential R1 to Low Density Residential District RS1, which is in the UGB, excuse me, that's okay, Low Density, which is UGB, to General District, which is C2. And our applicant is Mr. Michael Sadler. Mr. Sadler, are you available? All right. Mary, did we know if Mr. Sadler was going to be on?
I have not received a confirmation from him. I can certainly, I will call him.
With that, I will move, since he is not here, you can't respond, ask questions. I will open this to a public hearing. Once again, we are open to a public hearing. You get two minutes. State your name and address, and if you're donating your time, please let us know in the beginning. With that, I will open the public hearing. All right, so nobody in the public hearing. I will close it. Mary, would you like to let us know what's going on? I think she's calling him right now.
No, I can do my report now. This is zoning map amendment case number 245. It's for Mr. Sadler. He is requesting to rezone his property from current zoning R1 within the city of Telahoma and RS1, which is in the urban growth boundary of Coffee County. He is requesting a rezone, it's a split zoning lot, so part of the lot is in Telahoma, the rest is in the urban growth boundary. So, he is requesting to rezone the entire property to the CT zoning district within Telahoma. As I stated, he has split zoning, the entire property, well, he's in split jurisdiction. The entire property is 5.39 acres. It is currently vacant, but there's a cleared building envelope towards the southeastern portion of the lot, and the remaining portion of the lot is wooded with steep topography. The subject property is in northwest corner of the city and has frontage on Flower Town Road, which is a local road. The immediate area on Flower Town Road, as well as backing up onto North Jackson Street, is commercially zoned. For the comprehensive plan, this area within the city of Telahoma is in a commercial land use category, so it's appropriate to rezone the property to C2. And again, the part of the property that's in the urban growth boundary directly is adjacent to the commercial zoning district. So, the rezoning to the entire property to the city's C2, as well as the Coffee County C2, seems appropriate. It meets all the minimum lot size standards of the CT zoning district for both jurisdictions, and staff is recommending making a favorable, favorable recommendation to both the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Coffee County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Samanyego. All right. With that, I will entertain a mo, any questions? All right, with that, I'll.
Another question, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Mr. Warsham, can you speak to the fact? Can we proceed without the applicant being present?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
That is Mayor Nois and Alderman Blackwell. All right, we have a motion for favorable approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the county commission. All right, any questions? Any thing with the commission? All right, we are a quiet bunch today, so I will call the question. Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Swer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right. Mayor Nois?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so that is a favorable from our Planning Commission to all. All right. Let's move to the next one. This will be zoning map amendment 241 request. This is the rezone, this is to request the rezone of a parcel at 200 Flower Town Road in, from High Density Residential/Mobile Home Park R4 to General District C2. Our applicant is Mr. Nathan Hill. Mr. Hill, are you available? Did Mr. Hill know, Mary?
You sent the information.
Which we don't know. There could be power issues and everything else, so.
Correct.
All right, then, I will open this to a public hearing. Please state your name, two minutes. If you're donating your time, please let me know at the beginning. All right. All right, I will close the public hearing. All right. Mary, can you give a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mary Samanyego, for the record, this is zoning map amendment number 241 for Nathan and Linda Hill. It's at the 200, it's at 200 Flower Town Road. It's actually right next door to the rezoning that we just heard. This, I think you saw this case or this site over a year ago for possible expansion of his lawn mowing sales business on Flower Town Road. He is requesting to rezone the property from R4, for which his current business is a non-conforming use, into the CT's C2 zoning district, which would make his commercial retail sales and service use a permitted by right use. The property is 1.58 acres. Again, it's on 200 Flower Town Road. The existing commercial building is 6,500 square feet with a building and a parking area. The building was constructed in 2006. It meets all the dimensional and standards, minimum lot width and size for the CT zoning district. Again, per comprehensive plan considerations, it is in a development corridor, as well as the general commercial zone, land use category, which encourages rezonings in the zoning district being C2. I provided a list of all possible uses in your staff report for your consideration. It meets several of your economic development goals and land use objectives. Saying that, I recommend a vote to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a roll going here. That was Mayor Nois and seconded by Alderman Blackwell. All right, now that it is open, do we have any discussion? Do y'all remember when we talked about this about a year ago?
Well, and I'm trying to remember. I thought we did rezone it.
We, we agreed for him to be able to do his site plan upon him, upon him doing this, but we didn't stop him from going ahead and getting his concrete poured so he could cover his tractor. That was part of it, if people do. Isn't that how you remember it, Jennifer?
Hi, that's correct. We had a site plan, and in the Development Committee, in reviewing that site plan, is when Mr. Hill discovered the zoning conflict. And so, he had a need to get his current inventory, I believe, purchased by the end of the year, and because of that urgency, we said we would go ahead and consider the site plan as long as he took the necessary steps to, to request the correct zoning.
Other discussion? If that, I will call the question. All right. Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yeah.
Mr. Swer?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Sandlin?
Yes.
That has us all. I'm a yes as well, so that is a unanimous favorable to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. All right. Now on to annexation. All right. I think this is my first annexation, so we will go forward with that. All right, Mr. Markham, would you like to speak on your application?
Certainly. First, I would like to thank the Board for inviting me to attend this. We plan to enhance the property along a Volka Lake Road and develop about 30 lots that will front on private, new private roads, new public roads that will be developed on private land and then made public to the, to the landowners for new homes. If I have any questions anybody might have.
Would anybody from the Planning Commission have a question for Mr. Markham at this time? All right. With that, now I'm going to open up to a public hearing. If you would like to address, please state your name and address. You get two minutes, and if you're donating your time, please let us know at the beginning. All right, I'm opening the public hearing. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. All right, we will go. Mary, would you like to give a staff report?
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, as you stated, this is a Markham annexation, and this, you're making a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman on the annexation, as well as the plan of service. There's kind of two steps in this process. One is to annex the property, and then you also have a plan of service that states how city services will be delivered to the property once it is annexed. The property is non-contiguous, but per Tennessee Annexation Law 651104D, you're allowed to annex non-contiguous properties as long as they're within the urban growth boundary, and they will be meeting either a future industrial, commercial, or residential development. The applicant has applied, as he stated, for a 30-lot residential subdivision, which is on the tentative agenda for your March 15 meeting next week, month. The plan of service is in your packet. It's, has been reviewed through Ms. Moody's office for staff, service providers being Public Works, Parks and Rec, the Fire Department, Police Department, Planning and Co., the school system, IRPUD, and T-Way, Water, Sew, and Electric. They have all recommended approval. Surrounding properties are all zoned RS1. It's anticipated when and if this property is annexed and the plan of service is adopted. We will also be considering a rezoning to, rezone the property from the RS1, which is a county zoning district in the urban growth boundary, to R1, which is the city's equivalent zoning district. Similarly, we'll also be doing a land use amendment to put this property within a city of Telahoma land use category, also anticipated at that March 15 meeting. The planning consideration, again, the property is 15.35 acres. It's approximately one parcel away to the east from the existing city of Telahoma corporate boundaries. Per Tennessee statutes, advertisements of this meeting have been completed. The Planning Commission, again, states, makes a recommendation via a resolution, I've included the Planning Commission resolution in your packet, through a Planning Commission resolution to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for recommendation of approval of the. for recommendation of approval of the plan of service and the annexation as well. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mary. Does anybody have a question?
So, Mary, does that mean that when we make a motion, we make the motion for, to approve the resolution? Or do we make a motion for two separate things for the annexation and for the plan of services?
Wait a minute. I believe I put it in your report. Yes, you'll make a, a favorable recommendation for the planning commission resolution to the board of mayor and aldermen. The resolution speaks to the plan of service and the annexation. So one motion.
I, I have a quick question. Um, I thought the, um, the meeting where we, uh, this came before this commission in regards to approving this, um, first phase, um, I believe Jennifer and, and, um, I had a question about whether it should be a minor or a major subdivision. So I guess I just, um, Steve, if you're on the line, is Steve with us still?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Worsham?
He's, he's on the line, ma'am.
Okay, um, so, uh, the annexation, are we discuss, are we just considering that these lots right now? Or are we considering the, the rest of the development? I just want to make sure that it, I have it.
Yeah, you're, you're, um, approving the annexation of the fifteen point three five acres. This does not have any, um, approval attached to any subdivision.
Okay, got it.
Is this the time to, to, is this discussion time? Or is this just questions about what we're, what we're, what we're about to approve?
This is questions for, um, Mary.
I, I have a couple of discussion points. I don't know if it's appropriate here or after we make a motion.
We can make a motion and so we can go ahead and get into that if nobody has any direct questions for Mary right now.
Chad, have you closed the public hearing?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, good, all right.
Yes, sir. Um, so if I entertain a motion?
Right, yeah.
I would entertain a motion so we can begin discussion amongst the commissioners.
A move to approve.
Now second.
I've got, um, Mayor Nois and I think I heard Ms. Blackwell. All right, we have it open, um, discussion from the commissioners.
All right, I got, I got two points. Um, first point is, is there been, and this is, this may be more of a point for the mayor of the, the, the board of mayor and aldermen to discuss, but, um, there is significant, um, investment from the city for infrastructure, um, for this utilities, school, stuff like that. Um, is there an analysis on the, on the tax revenue brought in on this, uh, and annexation, uh, from, um, what we're giving the property owner to what we're receiving as from the, as a city? Yes, no? Board of mayor and alderman question?
Well, I, I'm, I'll comment on that. It's anytime that there's a, a, a housing development, certainly the city, the utilities are making an investment. But there's that, you're, you're, you're also getting a lot of new homes, you're getting new taxpayers. You know, you're, um, you might not, it might not pay off in the first year or two or three years, but it's a long-term significant payoff for the community, right?
I mean, I, I mean, that's my question. I mean, how many years, um, and, and there's a maintenance, there's a maintenance tag with that too. So, I mean, it may never, it may never, um, um, come to fruition, especially with road maintenance and stuff like that.
But I think you could, devil's advocate, Kit, you could probably say that with anything, right? I think that, you know, you invest in, I, I mean, if there, I think that what we've seen in the past few months is that there's a need for, um, more, more housing in the area, if you're looking at what housing's going for right now. Um, and I think that, you know, I, from my standpoint on the city board, um, I think it's a worthwhile investment.
Okay, I mean, and is this, is, I mean, there's a lot of other land back there too. Um, it's going to have a significant impact on the Evoque Riley Creek intersection, um, things like that.
I, I personally would like to talk about at some point when, when we go for the Evoque Riley Creek intersection, because I know when we looked at, um, in the, the one that we're, we're postponing, I think we can postpone that to that conversation too, because it does surround that, it, when you read through the report from Gresham Smith, um, I think that, you know, I don't know if this is taken into account, this mu- the, the development out there into that based on the email.
I can speak to that point. Um, as far as the traffic study that was conducted at the Y intersection, uh, Gresham Smith did not consider areas outside of our city limits. Uh, this area is in our urban growth boundary. And I did talk with John Story about that and his recommendation was to consider, uh, traffic impact studies. If we begin and to see enough development that we think it could change the signal warrant analysis that was done, uh, then we would put that cost on future developers and ask for them to pay for traffic impact studies. And there are, there are a range of traffic impact studies and analysis that could be done. But it would take, uh, my understanding from John Story is it would take a very pretty significant amount of growth to, um, change his recommendation or to see those, that intersection meet the warrants for a signal.
Okay, um, I, I just know, I mean, one, one point of maintenance from the county is that that's like, that's one of the worst throes in the county. Um, I would imagine that the city would be cleaning that up if that was, if it was annexed. So that's a, that's a plus.
If I may speak to that, this is Steve Worsham. We will be entering into an agreement with the county relative to matters such as road maintenance. So that'll be something that the board of mayor and alderman will consider later relative to this same issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, well, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of, uh, just thoughts. I mean, I'm not so sure that, that, um, I mean, I, I, I don't know. Um, I'm kind of, uh, against, um, extending the city boundaries when there's, when there's, when there's other, you know, we need to be focused on the core of it, but that's, that's just me.
Any other discussion?
So, so if we, if we provide a favorable recommendation for this, then are we then providing a favorable recommendation for the rest of the property too? That, are we looking at big picture? That's the one part, I'm just, want to make sure that I know I'm voting for just these, this, these fifteen acres and, um, or whether I'm putting in a favorable recommendation for the lot of it, so that I can.
Absolutely.
No, ma'am, it's only the fifteen acres. There's a legal description for the fifteen point three five acres that will be attached to the resolution. So to be clear, exactly what portion of the entire Markham, um, property holdings is being annexed? So this is only the, um, properties that are in the northwest corner of Evoque Lake and, uh, Corpus Creek.
Right, that's correct, but because it's, we're leapfrogging here. So by doing this, then it would be given that anything in between would then, by casting a vote for that, would be, we'd be casting a favorable vote for the land in between to be annexed at a later date. That's why I just want to make sure that, you know, we're clear on that part.
Right, um, the land in between is not owned by the Markhams as of this date. It's owned by an, an outside party.
Motion is that we, it's only fifteen acres that is currently by, owned by the Markhams. And as, and if we understand, Shelley, you're just asking, by us saying yes, does that mean you feel like we have to say?
Yeah, I just, I just thought I remembered Jennifer at the last meeting when this came before that, you know, that was, they were developing, there was just some parcels and it was part of a, a bigger plan that our intent, the intention was to develop more. And I just wanted to make sure that we were all, you know, that by voting now, we were clear that we're voting, we're sort, we're starting to, you were setting the path or setting the, uh, kind of setting it up so that, that we can then later, we can approve the rest of it, I guess.
So, so Shelley, the, I think the, what you're referring to is the, the four lots on Copperus Creek Road there that, um, above to the north of the subjected property, um, on the map. We, we voted to subdivide those maybe three, four months ago, something like that.
Maybe December or so, I think, was it December or November?
It was last year.
One of, one of those.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm probably, excuse me if I'm confused, but.
But, but yeah, I mean, you, 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 you had the point there, um, that, that those were more than double the minimum size, um, and kind of, uh, looking at possibly, um, you know, being subdivided again. Um, I mean, this, this whole area out there, I mean, I, I know you're familiar with it, but I mean, it's just nothing but, but open pasture. And, uh, and there can be a lot of houses put in there and, and put in.
Yeah, I'm not making an opinion, yeah, on whether I, I think it's a good idea or bad. I just want to make sure that I have it, um, that I'm clear on what exactly we're, um, setting the stage for and just want to make sure not, you know, it's beautiful and I would be happy to see a, a development and I know, um, that's, it's ripe for, that would be an asset to our community. I just want to make sure that I, um, that every, uh, that I understand that, you know, I don't know how to fit this, so I just want to make sure that I'm, 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 I know that, am I voting on just a, a, a phase or, you know, just?
Ms. Smith, are you asking, are you asking if this motion that you're making tonight wants to establish a precedent for, uh, future annexations in Markham property?
Correct, thank you.
Um, I don't believe so. I think that each one has to be reviewed on their own merits. Um, they must meet statute as well as have a plan of service. Uh, but Mr. Worsham can certainly, uh, correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Mary, sorry, and, you know, this is, um, my first annexation as well. So I'm just trying to make sure that I, I go by the book and, and learn as I can as well.
Yeah, you need to understand what, what you're voting on.
I'm looking at the, the map, you know, when, I guess the Hunter's Ridge community was put in in the nineties and we really reached out, uh, into the urban growth boundary to annex Hunter's Ridge. And that's been a wonderful source, a wonderful, wonderful community, nice homes, great, uh, property tax, uh, revenue. So I, I, this seems to be something similar to that on a smaller scale. Fifteen acres, nice homes, uh, we need, we need homes in this community. I mean, it's really tight. And this looks like a really good investment that would, you know, just, this is how the city wants to grow, right? We want to put nice homes in these areas of, of our, of our county.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry for putting you guys through that and I didn't word my questions well, but I just, um, I really want to get a, um, a really good understanding on the whole process. So this is my first time on this side of an annexation process. I've, I've been on the other, on the developer's side before.
I, I feel like on snow days, words are hard for all of us.
Thank you. I don't know why we have these meetings on Mondays. Why, why Monday evenings? Maybe Tuesday morning or something, I don't.
It's all right, and I kind of went in and out, so I'm, and anybody else need to speak on this?
Just Greg, to clarify my concern earlier is like, I'm definitely of the opinion that if there's going to be development out here, that it should be annexed. Um, but I, I just don't know if this is the right place to develop more for the city. Um, anyway, I'm done.
I thought I would just add a couple of points if I could. One is you mentioned the four lots that were previously, I think, presented to you as a minor subdivision plat. And those properties are included in this annexation request. So his plans to keep those, uh, that prior plat and keep those four lots out in the county, uh, he has changed his mind and included those lots in this request. So they will be part of one future development. And I think one of the benefits that we looked at, obviously for, it's a mutual benefit for the city and for the developer, is that these homes will be developed on city or public sewer.
Right, but again, and I'm so sorry, guys, but just my, just for clarification. So, but we considered those as a minor subdivision, but it's not, it's so, even though Mary's saying this is separate from any subdivision applica- application, but they will be included in a bigger subdivision, so they, it's no longer minor at this point, it's going to be.
No, so what you approved before, he presented a plat. So it was a plat for a four lot subdivision, all of the lots fronting Copperus Creek Road. And there was no annexation request. Today, you're considering annexation of the fifteen acres. And in the future, he will submit a preliminary plat for what development of those fifteen acres looks like. But tonight, you're not considering a development plat.
But doesn't the regulations, don't they say that if you know that there's going to be more development, you have to consider it as a major subdivision?
When, when he brings that plat, it will be a major subdivision. But our definition, and I should let Mary speak, so I'm sorry. Um, our definition is more about the number of lots and the infrastructure that's developed. That's how we define minor and major.
Right, but at the time, we knew there was going to be more, so that's where I got kind of like thrown off with me.
Correct, yeah, he received approval of the minor subdivision. Um, that was before my time with the city of Tullahoma. I'm not aware if he actually recorded that plat. I, I'm under the suspicion that it was not recorded. But regardless, in either scenario, that plat will become null and void in that area that the four lots were going to be created in will be encompassed within the thirty lot preliminary plat, um, that he's already submitted.
Excellent, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
The minor subdivision goes away.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for, I was just, I got hung up on this.
Yeah, and per your code, anytime you subdivide more than four lots and/or have public improvement, it's required to be a major subdivision. So you'll see it, um, with, uh, preliminary plat, uh, the planning commission will approve, staff will approve the construction plans and then the final plat will come back to the planning commission for final approval.
Perfect, thank you so much. You're welcome. Sorry, guys, sorry to, to delay with a little lesson for me.
Problem, not a problem. Any other discussion? If not, I will call the question and I will go across, as I see you on the computer. Um, Mr. Swear?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
And I will be, yes, that will be a unanimous decision and that is for the annexation favorable to the board of mayor. Next, the, we had one that was going to continue, so we will be at, uh, Redbird Minor Subdivision Plat. This is to create four residential lots and existing three point nine acres on nine hundred block of Duck Blanton Road. Our applicant is Mr. Jeff Dean. Mr. Dean, are you available?
Hold on, sir, I'm, Mr. Grimes, I'm sorry, point of order. We need to state on the record, um, the continuance request for the Christian Life Church strides. So you just state that the applicant, um, the staff is continuing the case and state that it's going to the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, four thirty P M planning commission meeting.
Okay, I will do that.
Stating, stating that during the public hearing is itself notice, so we don't have to pay to re-advertise it.
Okay, so.
We'll open this up to the public hearing to say the Christian Life Church Strides Minor Subdivision Plat has been, the staff will continue to March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, planning commission hearing. All right, does that work?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing on the Christian Life Church Strides and then op- open up back up to the Redbird, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
So Redbird, Mr. Dean, are you available?
Mr. Dean is not, this is Jared Sides, I work for Johnson and Associates Land Surveying, I'll be representing him.
All right, just if you explain the project and then we'll go from there.
Yes, sir, this is a, uh, three point nine three acre track. We're looking to split it into four single family dwellings and it's located on Dunk Blanton Road, zoned RS one. Uh, our smallest lot is nine tenths of an acre. tenths of an acre, and we have water, it'll be on septic, and the soil evaluation has been done, and we've submitted those plats.
All right. Does the, does the commission have any questions? All right, with that, thank you, I will want to open this up for a public hearing, please state your name, you have two minutes, you're in your address, and if you're donating your time, please let me know at the beginning. The public hearing is now open. All right, I will close the public hearing, all right. Mary, would you please give the staff report?
Uh, thank you, sir, again, Mary Semeniego for the record, this is the Red Bird Minor Subdivision, the applicant is Jeff Dean, the current zoning is RS1 in the urban growth boundary of Coffee County. The existing lot is 3.93 acres, which is currently vacant, and the applicant is proposing a four lot subdivision under the current RS1 zoning standards. They, the proposed lots meet all of the dimensional standards of the existing zoning district. They are proposing development on septic, the septic site have been preliminary approved through TDEC, and I have copies of that approval for each of the lots. There were no comments from the, of the Development Advisory Committee, except for myself, I'm asking that, prior to final signatures of the plat, that the individual subject's systems information be added to the plat, and show the road classifications for both roads that this property fronts, which are Dunk Blanton Road and Anthony Mills Road. Saying that, staff's recommendation is to approve the final plat, subject to staff conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, any questions? With that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay.
All right, that was Alderman Blackwell, and I think Mr. Comer in there with the second? All right, any discussions about this? All right, with that, I will call the question, and this is for the approval of the minor subdivision plat with staff's recommendations, I guess, is that how you would say it, Mary?
No, it would be approval of the minor subdivision final plat with staff's conditions of approval.
Staff's conditions of approval, all right, yes ma'am. So, I'll go up here, Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Schwier?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And yes for me, that was unanimous decision. All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing for the Copperus Ridge, majors, major subdivision preliminary plat, this will need to be, staff to, the staff has to be continued to March 15th, 2021, at our planning commission hearing. So with that, I will close the public hearing there on Copperus Ridge.
Excellent.
And now we will do other business, we have a zoning text amendment 226, and that's on section 804, non-conforming lots of records, if you would take that over, Mary?
Uh, thank you, sir, Mary Semeniego for the record, this is a text amendment that I discussed with the planning commission last month. Again, this was a section of the code, when I began my job, the first week, I read the entire zoning code, as well as the subdivision code, and this was the one section that caused me concern. As background, in 2018, the text amendment was approved to the planning commission and the Board of Mayor and Alderman, severely limiting the use of non-conforming lots of record. The newly adopted language, in effect, made residential properties unbuildable that were either less than 6,000 square feet, in total area, had less than 30 feet in width at its nearest point, or had a front setback of 15 feet or less, or five feet side or less. In United States constitutional zoning law, a regulatory takings occurs when a government regulation limits the use of private property to such a degree that the regulation effectively deprives the property owners of economic reasonable use or value of their property. In general zoning terms, the intent of the non-conforming lot regulation is to limit the development of substandard legal lots, while at the same time, not depriving property owners of reasonable use of their property. The proposed text amendment that I've drafted and is in your staff report, limits the development to just one single-family house with associated accessory structures, but it doesn't allow for the full entitlement of a given zoning district. By that, I mean, if it is in the R4 zoning district, they could not try to exercise a right if they, you put a duplex on the property, even being a duplex is a permitted use, they would only be able to build a single-family house, so they are able to have reasonable use of their property, but they don't get the full extent of the permitted uses of the zoning district. So, again, the language is in your staff report, I'll go ahead and read it for the record, it's a, it's a short paragraph, just for the public's benefit. Non-conforming lots of record, a structure may be constructed or reconstructed on a lawfully established non-conforming lot or parcel, created for the purposes of development, and recorded in the deed books or plat books prior to adoption of this zoning ordinance, even if the lot or parcel does not comply with the current zoning and subdivision regulations. However, all structures constructed or placed upon such lot or parcel must comply with all other required zoning bulk regulations and yard requirements. Setbacks, height, et cetera, except for lot area and the dimension, so really, it's a non-conforming lot because it's either too narrow, or, and/or it doesn't meet the minimum lot area for the zoning district. However, no use, as an example, two-family residence that requires a greater lot size than the established minimum lot size for a particular zone is permissible on a non-conforming lot. And then the other part of the text amendment, for some reason, there was a, a exception to a front yard setback, kind of buried in this non-conforming section, I'm recommending that you put the exception to a front yard setback as a footnote to the setback table. So when one is looking and trying to find their front yard setback, they can see that it's 25 feet, but they'll see a footnote, and then they'll see that there's another way of doing the calculation, so it's for ease of use. Saying that, I recommend that you forward this with a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Or Mayor and Board of Alderman. Mr. Grimes?
Sorry, I disconnected for a second.
Oh, I thought, I thought I lost you there.
It was not you, no, it was, yeah, I, I, it went out there for a minute, but it came back strong.
Okay.
All right, so, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I can't.
Motion made from Mayor Nois, and seconded by Alderman Blackwell, and that is for the zoning text amendment 226 on the non-conforming lots of record, is there any discussion that would like to be made? With that, I will call the question, all right, Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
All right, Schwier?
Yes.
Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, and I'm a yes, so that is approved, seven and a half. And one last item, and that is the RFP on the comprehensive plan, Mary, you want to speak on that?
Yes, sir, we got a very positive response, we received seven requests for proposals that the selection committee is considering. We initially had an aggressive timeline, and we were anticipating bringing the selection committee's recommendation to tonight's hearing at the planning commission, but because of the overwhelming response, which is wonderful, with seven RFPs to consider, I wanted, we, we wanted to give the committee enough time to thoroughly digest the RFPs and come to a conclusion and not be rushed, with, really, it was like a week to review all of them and do a score. So long story short, we're going to be meeting this week to discuss the, the RFPs and go over the scoring, and then we anticipate probably calling in the top two candidates for an interview, and then bringing out a recommendation from the selection committee to the planning commission at their March 15th meeting, and then ultimately, it would go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Any questions?
Nope, just excited.
Exciting times, all right, with that, I will close it.
I have a question on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a procedural question, well, well, what, what would be the format for the presentation to the commission of that recommendation?
Um, I, staff just, and I anticipated that myself would just present the recommendation to you, it wouldn't be a formal presentation by the consulting firm, unless there is something else that, that would be the planning commission's pleasure.
I think that would be okay, but I was just wanting to make sure that we would get enough information about it to make an informed decision, rather than just a rubber stamp.
Yes, sir, I will provide you with the full RFP, as well as all the data that was collected by the selection committee.
And Mary, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Who's on that selection committee?
The members of the, the members of the selection committee are myself, Winston Brooks, Community Development Director, Jennifer Moody, the city manager, the mayor, Scott St. John, city engineer, Scott Young from TUA, and Mr. Grimes, your chair.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right, with that, I will announce our next meeting will be Monday, March 15th, at 4:30, and with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you all, for everybody coming down on this snowy day.
Thank you very much.